All right, welcome. Ladies. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Wednesday, October nine, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the second in a series of budget meetings we are having. So the roll call, I guess, since it's a regular meeting, will commence with our city clerk.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter has been excused. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson has been excused. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. The sole item for tonight's regular agenda is the review of the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six proposed by annual budget by department. And tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five departments presenting, starting with the City Council Department, followed by the City Manager, and our Assistant to the City Manager, Michael Vargas, will lead us through both of those initial presentations.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. Let's begin a review of your City Council operating budget on page two oh one of your budget document there, two hundred and one. So to begin, we have the structure here with the citizens of Lakewood, followed by the City Council, whose duties include represent the citizens of Lakewood, adopt ordinances and resolutions, and employ a city manager to run the city consistent with those policies and goals. You also have a variety of committees, boards, and commissions across a number of important policy areas as well, to include community services, the arts, planning, public safety, and the youth. Moving on. For City Council Goals and Commitment, you all adopted a recently this year, a new set of City Council Goals for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. Those four goals are listed here, such as downtown parks and a multi-generational community center, public safety, access to parks, parks and lake access, and development, revitalization of the downtown Lakewood Station District areas. There's also a variety of commitments in addition to these goals, such as financial stewardship, ensuring a safe city, and providing a wide range of community events and youth programming. Moving on. For the department functions of the City Councils, some important notes here was that this Lakewood is a code city with a council-manager form of government. That is to say, the City Council appoints a professional, full-time city manager to implement your policies and goals. Moving on to the City Council two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four accomplishments, we have a variety listed here to name a few key ones. The City Council made significant infrastructure and park improvements throughout the city, acted in a leadership capacity at the federal, state, and regional level. The City Council supported the city's cybersecurity initiatives to include disaster recovery, made measurable strides in public safety technology investments such as acts on tasers, body worn cameras, and in-car cameras. Some major federal funds that were brought home include advocated for and secured one million dollars in federal funds for the Living Access Support Alliance, Gravity Lake Commons Affordable Housing Project, as well as one point one million dollars in race planning grants for the Green Street Loop Project right here in the downtown area. Moving to your two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six anticipated key accomplishments, some important ones include adopting ordinances and regulations that align with your newly adopted goals, strengthening the city's relationships across a variety of partners throughout the city, to include neighborhood groups, associations, especially with our neighbors JBLM and Kent Murray, local schools, and your advisory boards and committees, and take a proactive role in legislative advocacy, especially in areas such as public safety and housing. So, moving to the next page, your service and program changes. Looking at the top table here, we have a variety of line item changes here. In two thousand and twenty-five, they all totaled roughly about a fifteen hundred dollar increase, and again, in two thousand and twenty-six, a roughly fifteen hundred dollar increase. And your, and those line items are denoted in that table. As for position inventory, there have been no changes there.
Trying to figure out what the benefits are. Look at those numbers like, what comprises benefits, because we don't really get any except the, was that the purse piece? Interesting. Why would it vary so much? Should be straightforward, the same, I would think, roughly based upon salary benefits. Strange how it varies between thirty-five, four thousand, seventeen, thirty-two. Okay.
So based on where you are today, it's been projected out.
Got it. Okay.
So, moving on to performance measures, you have your various City Council retreats and sponsored and supported events. We keep track of those, and they are all listed below there. Moving on to the next page with the City Council Purpose and Description, we've already covered some of this in previous pages, but suffice to say that you do deploy thirteen working committees, boards, and commissions to help out in a variety of policy areas there. So, on the following page, two oh nine, we have the financial information here. Your proposed operating budget for the City Council totals one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-five, and again, one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-six. Highlights of the two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget compared to the two thousand and twenty-four adjusted budget are as follows. Under salaries, wages, and benefits, the increase to the City Council from the salary commission recommendations. Under other supplies, we have an increase for meeting supplies. Under travel and training, there were some increased costs due to the AWC, Annual Conference Costs, and AWC Municipal Budget and Fiscal Management Conference, as well as mileage and parking for both. And under other services and charges, we have an increase for the Community Connector Event.
So the other services and charges roughly is what, it's community things we do, it's sister city staff, or what's comprised in that fourteen-eight, just out of curiosity?
This will include your special events, Youth Council. So special events is about three thousand a year.
Of the other services and charges?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you also have Youth Council, which is almost twelve thousand dollars.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to make it clear, and it wasn't City Council doing crazy things. This is actually for
Yes.
Youth Council and other things that are part and parcel of the department.
Yes, and special events is your Community Connector Event.
Right.
Centered in City Council's.
Okay.
So the changes in the capital and one-time funded programs are as follows. Two thousand and twenty-four programs include the cost of travel for city officials to the friendship city of Donzao City in the Henan Province People Republic of China, and then also the cost to host a delegation from Gimhe, Republic of South Korea, as well. And for the two thousand and twenty-five program, we have airfare for city officials to travel to the sister city, Baung, Philippines.
So nothing's proposed in twenty-six, but we're looking at something in twenty-five?
Correct. Under one capital, one-time funded programs, yep, it's in two thousand and twenty-five. Well, that concludes the City Council operating budget. Let me see if there are any other questions on that particular piece of it.
Great. All right.
Moving on to the City Manager Department operating budget, and that starts on page two hundred eleven. So to start off with the structure here, we have the City Manager who implements the City Council goals and objectives, leads the city departments, and facilitates communication among the City Council, city personnel, and community. You also have policy support provided by yours truly, and a communications division composed of a communications manager and communications coordinator. Moving on to the next page, we have the primary alignment with your four City Council goals and commitments. Moving on to the next page, we have the department functions by criteria. So in this page, it's important to note, the City Manager Department ensures achievement of your goals by placing authority, assigning accountability, and monitoring performance. Moving on to the City Manager, two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four accomplishments, we have a variety listed here. Some key ones include the successful implementation of projects and policies that align with your old set of goals from two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four. We had developed and advocated the city's federal, state, and county legislative materials. We had language included in the Federal National Defense Authorization Act, a support addressing the North Clear Zone issue, and we had sixty-eight thousand dollars secured from the Washington State Office of Public Defense for our city's public defenders. Some additional accomplishments include completed capital improvement project financing strategies for parks, transportation facilities, and also facilitated the development of a regional emergency management team, including tabletop and live exercises throughout those years. Moving on to the anticipated key projects for two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, we have developed your new set of federal, state, and county legislative materials. We have facilitated development of a new City Council vision, since the current thirty-year vision would end in two thousand and twenty-six. We also have analyzed operational alternatives to the municipal court services, as well as finalize and implement a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging strategic plan. For the communications side, we have continued quarterly Lakewood communicate, Lakewood Connections magazines for all residents in the city, grow the city's social media reach, and maintain our websites to meet accessibility standards. So moving on to the City Manager Service and Program Changes in this table, to summarize, we have roughly a forty-four hundred dollar decrease in two thousand and twenty-five, followed by a roughly seventy-two hundred dollar decrease in two thousand and twenty-six, and those items are listed in the table.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I was just wondering about the reduced special events advertising. So there's a remaining budget. You just did, was it not being used? Was it not, was there, what's the reasoning for the reduction in advertising our events?
It's not being used.
Okay. That's, okay, thank you.
Part of the answer might be that communications came to lodging tax committee for a request, and that may be reflected somewhere else. So this might be general fund money is going down, lodging tax requests going up, right?
Correct, if this is the general fund.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, the other things that have changed too is just the form of advertisement. So if we're using social media as opposed to print or.
Okay.
Right, moving on to the position inventory.
Good, okay.
Yep, we have no changes in the position inventory here.
Quick point from Ms. Kraus on the two thousand and twenty-five salary and benefits. As you know, we passed the manager's contract last week, so that should reflect the change there for twenty-five going forward.
Yeah, so at the time the budget was developed, we didn't want to be presumptuous, so I'll capture this as part of the carryforward budget adjustment for twenty-five and twenty-six.
Why wouldn't we just update the budget to reflect reality, as opposed to doing a carryforward adjustment?
Because the budget is balanced right now. So we'll use the year-end savings, and that's what we typically do.
Got it.
Is adjusted at the next cycle.
No problem.
Okay. Yeah, so moving on to performance measures here, we have a variety of them related to communications for your review there. And moving on to the City Manager Purpose and Description, which we've covered already, and looking at the financial information portion, we have the proposed operating budget for the City Manager Department totaling one point one million dollars in two thousand and twenty-five, and one point one two million dollars in two thousand and twenty-six. The two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget is a five point five percent or fifty-eight thousand dollar increase from the two thousand and twenty-four adjusted budget. And the highlights of the two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget compared to the two thousand and twenty-four adjusted budget are as follows. For salaries, wages, and benefits, we have some step increases based on performance evaluations and new Ask Me contract. Under professional services, we have a decrease in the state governmental relations contract and photography and videography services for special projects. Under communications, we have additional postage for Connections Magazine. Under other services and charges, we have a decrease in special events and advertisements, and adjusted subscriptions, and an increase in membership fees for the Government Social Media Association. And under internal service and M O charges, we had added WCIA Assessment Increase and Captured Information Technology MNO.
Question? Yep. The professional services contract, is that solely the lobbyists?
Correct.
Is that, and so somewhere along the way, we negotiated a little bit down?
Correct, where that was negotiated, yep. So that's adjusting that contract.
Thanks.
Moving on to the financial information continued, we have the table here for your review. The changes in the capital and one-time funded programs are as follows. Two thousand and twenty-four programs include contracted services for diversity, equity, inclusion, build your better campaign, internal service charges, charges for I T, which include computer replacement, co-location, recovery services, and a variety of others, and also to include risk management, WCIA assessment, and property management beam maintenance project. The two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six program includes internal service charges for I T, which are listed there.
Let's take a little.
Yeah. Yeah, and with that, that concludes the City Manager operating budget.
So we're skipping over admin services tonight, right, and going to Parks and Rec? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ready?
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, City Council. I'm excited to share information regarding the work program for Parks Recreation and Community Services. Our mission is to create a healthy and vibrant community, and we strive to do that every day for the city of Lakewood. I am going to get started on page two seventy-nine, and the org chart there is showing you our regular employees. However, I just want to emphasize, we utilize a variety of resources to accomplish our work. It includes full-time people, part-time people, seasonal employees, contractors, vendors, partners, sponsors, and lots of volunteers. So very flexible and responsive, we're bold and innovative, we accomplish a lot in the last two years, and we have a list of anticipated key projects for each of the different divisions to meet council goals, your vision, and your community commitments. So I'm not going to get into super detail on each section, but I'm going to summarize each one, and then I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have on the detailed information that you have. So again, starting off of page two seventy-nine with our org chart, you know, we have a very lean organization, but we do believe that we do an excellent job of implementing the council's vision of creating an inclusive community and providing equitable services to all of our citizens. Everyone is welcome in parks, and we do, and we are working on council's goals of improving access to parks and lakes and creating a downtown park that may include a multi-generational community center. This effort will continue to help us provide a wide range of community events and programs and experiences for those who want to live, work, play, and visit the city of Lakewood. Our department is broken down into five main divisions. We have administration, recreation, services, senior services, human services, and operations and maintenance. We also manage the city's parks and facilities, CIP program, as well as half of the city's vehicle and fleet program. We don't manage any of the police vehicles. So on page two eighty-six, and I'm working on that top page here where it has two eighty, you know, the very top of your book is the page number.
Twenty-six.
Uh-huh, two eighty-six. You'll see, and that's the list of the significant department changes, and the additional resources that you see added are really to support the thirtieth anniversary of the city and two thousand and twenty-six, anniversary of our incorporation, can you believe that? And a continuation of a public art program, and then, of course, the increase to human services, which is based on the one percent policy we have of the general fund. The operational reductions that you see were made throughout our budget to support balancing the general fund. We all had to look through our budgets to get the balance or the general fund to budget. We had about a three percent reduction, and most of those reductions were made to operations. And some of those things, Mayor Whalen, as you had mentioned, is some of them you might see in special events and those kinds of things, and what we are doing is, we did take it out to balance the general fund, but we are looking at utilizing the LTAC funds to support those improvements. Or to offset those reductions, pardon me. But our primary focus is to maintain and improve city infrastructure, which is a legislative mandate. This work also enhances the beauty of Lakewood and creates safe places to visit and extends the life of our city resources and investments. We do this by maximizing use of all of our city resources. Our work program is constantly changing and ever-increasing, but we're creative and responsive and do the best that we can with the resources that we're provided. We do use an equity lens to be sure that we're considering our entire community's needs before taking action. We do this by looking at data, being observant, watching trends, listening to the community, and then leveraging our partnerships and grants and our various resources to enable us to accomplish so much. We're fortunate that Lakewood is a very generous community, and it's a very collaborative community, and that's how we're continuing to meet our forty-five percent cost recovery goal for Parks and Recreation Services, which we acknowledge every month in your quarterly report. We list that out for you. So we're going to do a quick review of each division, and that starts on page two hundred and ninety-three. And so we start with our administrative services, and this is the division that oversees and supports five city advisory boards. We also participate in the Lake Management District Board. We supervise, this is the department that supervises all department staff, personnel. We respond to council and citizen requests. It recommends policy to you, and it also updates our planning documents, and we manage public and private use of all the city parks and facilities. We proactively seek partnerships, grants, and resources to support citywide operations, and then the next biennium, we'll be implementing the Parks and Facilities Capital Improvement Program, as well as updating our legacy plan. Those will be some major projects. Any questions there? We'll just jump to the next section, which is page two ninety-five.
Two ninety-four has the, sort of the money breakdown, at least in.
I beg your pardon?
I'm just looking at the actual
Okay.
Budget dollars there, just taking a quick look.
You have any specific questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Not yet. So modest increase in the park sales tax.
Most of you, yeah, most, yeah, and that we utilize that to help meet our forty-five percent cost recovery. The city, there's a one tenth of one percent from all sales tax that goes directly to parks. We're really fortunate to have that in Pierce County, and so we do utilize that to offset our operations in all of the recreation and the parks divisions. And it's done comparably based on the allocation to that department.
Just from my own education, so how do you interfund service charges for reserves, how do you set those? Is there some sort of calculation that goes into that? Okay. Got it, okay. Any questions on at least pages two ninety-four and/or two ninety-two, which kind of provided the overall dollars for at least the two funds there?
If not, we can jump to page two ninety-five. That's where we start human services. I think each division has, from now on, has about two pages, so
Okay.
Page two ninety-five is featuring human services, which manages the city's one percent grant funds for human services. This also is where we take care of Lakewood's Promise Initiatives, as well as supervise and manage the Lakewood Youth Council and the community collaboration. We offset administrative costs of this division because we support the choice program. We get, we're a fiscal agent for the choice program, so we're able to see those resources and put those in towards our program. And a major focus in the next biennium for this division will be to help council determine the best use of the opioid settlement funds, and we'll be facilitating an ever-growing youth council. You did note that you had additional resources allocated to youth council, and we had forty-two children, or young people, on our youth council, and so just buying sweatshirts is a lot of money. But they also, you know, are really excited about doing the summit, also doing different initiatives and having events and activities to get out there and communicate with their peers, as well as have that voice that they want to share. So we want to support them the best we can.
The increase on the the one percent, the seventy grand, is a reflection of the increase in the general fund, obviously, right?
Correct.
One percent.
Correct. And they'll be bringing those recommendations to you in another four weeks or something like that for your, they'll be presenting those to you. They've already gone through the
Process.
Grant process. They're doing their deliberation at this point. We start on the Recreation Division on page two ninety-seven, and the details are more located on two ninety-eight. And Recreation, this division works with a variety of partners year-round to provide safe, healthy, and accessible and inclusive programs for all ages, abilities, and cultures, regardless of anybody's circumstances. Most programs are low to no cost to support those in our community who are most in need of our services. We've expanded our community wellness opportunities, our specialty programs for youth when they're out of school, and our public art program. Besides our very successful Farmers Market and Summer Fest, we do continue to provide special events throughout the year, which brings the community together, and we are heavily reliant on LTAC funds to make all of those events happen. We've recognized the need for additional staff and resources to do those big events and those ongoing events, and so those were represented in the LTAC fund, and it does help the general fund.
Any questions, Mr. Bokey? Any questions, Mr. Boki?
Grants, donations, contributions. Is that just, do we know of any grants already, or are you just estimating?
Are you talking about on page two ninety-eight?
Two ninety-eight, yeah, grants, donations, contribution, the revenue section of the it's thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's in the past, it's been sixty. Looks like this year it's coming in at thirty-nine thousand. Are we just, I guess I'm looking at Ms. Kraus more than me. Do we know, do we know of any grants that we're getting for recreation, or are we just saying that this is what we think we're going to get this year, and we're just carrying it forward?
So in the prior years, so in the original budget, it's more of what we anticipated. In the previous years, you'll see where we actually receive more than what we're projecting, and that's because Mary's team goes out and gets more sponsorships.
Okay.
So there will primarily be sponsorships, and there are some grant programs in there as well.
Oh, so it's sponsorships like for?
When we have Amazon or the
Right.
The unions or the credit unions and things like that. So we do have regulars that provide those on an annual basis. There's also some grants that we get for farmers market from the Washington State Farmers Market Association and other kinds of things. But as Toss said, is that she's conservative in knowing what we probably will get. And then, of course, we're always out there looking for new ways to make those programs low and no cost so that they're accessible to everybody in the community.
Okay, thank you.
The next division that we have, starting on two ninety-nine, is our senior services, page two ninety-nine. And this nomadic group is working to support our older adults, even though we have lost our beloved community center. We continue to find creative ways to get our older adults in the community engaged and promote good health and build strong minds and important social connections. All those things really help people maintain their independence. They avoid loneliness and the negative impacts of isolation, which is very typical for older adults if they don't have a good social connection. We continue to utilize all of the, all of the available spaces that we can provide programming in. And we will also really focus this year and next year on increasing our revenue generating programs to offset operations. You know, when you have a full community center, you're able to do that really variety of programs. And we did a lot more revenue generating programs. So now that we've kind of got the social part back into gear and all of those different educational kinds of programs, we're really looking at picking up the pace on that to help offset those operations to meet that forty-five percent cost recovery.
Question. Um, where's the county's contribution in the revenue line? And how much has it been? I don't remember.
You mean how much we give the county?
No, how much the county gives us on, for senior centers?
Oh, they, it should be under, yeah, yeah.
Under what?
Just over ten thousand.
Okay.
Each year.
Under grants, donations, okay, so that's the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a two-year grant, but we get it every year, so. And that really offsets the part-time assistance that you have with the program. That's what it's for. Even without our senior center, we're still doing a lot more than a lot of the other senior centers in the county, so we've been fortunate to get that grant.
And the backstory is, they have put a little bit more money in, but the bias, and that's not a negative term in this case, but the bias is towards the ones that are in the unincorporated areas. So the big, the big three being Key Penn and then Midland. And well.
There's Key Penn at Penmet, yeah.
Key Penn One, and then the one out in Midland.
The what?
The one out in Midland. So they get the bulk, right? And then everybody else kind of gets, but.
We're grateful.
The county council wants to put in more, but that won't be till twenty-six at the earliest.
Yeah, so. We'll be looking for those funds at that time as well. So if there are any more questions on senior services, we can jump into operations and maintenance. That starts on page three oh-one. And that's quite a large division. This division's broken down into various work groups, which include parks, facilities, street end, and, or pardon me, street and stormwater operations. By being flexible with all of our resources, this work group continues to maintain city infrastructure so that we can maximize its use and extend the life of our city's investments. Our priority is to make sure everyone visiting our city, driving on our streets, entering our buildings, or using our parks have a good first impression of Lakewood, as well as a positive and safe experience. Our Streets O and M team focuses on right-of-way issues to include the pavement, vegetation, gateway, and landscape maintenance, stormwater operations, and over, we manage over eight thousand city street signs. Those are just the city street signs, not all of the other street signs. They pick up tens and tons of garbage that's just dumped in our right-of-ways, and they respond annually to over two thousand three one one requests. They ensure that a safe flow of traffic occurs, whether it's dry and sunny, gray and wet, or covered with snow. They're ready for action. Our parks use, our park use continues to substantially grow each year, and we work really hard to support the thousands and thousands of people who visit our park sites each week. They also support, this team also supports our local city events that we do throughout the city, as well as the many, many private events that we have, the sporting competitions that occur, and general use of our outdoor spaces. The addition of the new ball fields at Fort Silicon Park has really proven to be very popular. Just as a note, last year, or in, let's see, we're in twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, we probably generated about nine to ten thousand dollars a year using the ball fields. And this year, we have already accrued forty-one thousand dollars. And that's not counting the Pierce College use, because they don't pay to use. So that's been a really good draw. It's very popular. And we were just called to ask to put in a bid to to sponsor the state high school championship, state baseball high school championship. I don't think it's the college. I think it's the state, so yeah. So they called and said, hey, why don't you put a bid in? It was due three weeks ago, but we are happy to hold it open until you guys can put it together. So, yeah, so that's exciting, too. And Pierce College would be our partner doing that, so. Our facilities team has struggled this year. We have aging infrastructure throughout the city, but they work really hard to keep them clean and operating efficiently. And in our spare time, we also, as I said, manage the maintenance and replacement of city vehicles and equipment, anything that's not related to the police department. So that's a little bit bigger set of charts and information. That's a good summary. But if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer that.
So I do have a little bit of a question, so. We are setting aside, we're actually spending funds to repair the city hall.
Mm-hmm, the IGA right now, or the?
The beams, yeah, at some point. So we're using some one-time money from the ARPA funds to do that. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What is the thought about trying to budget in over time, just some reserve money just for facilities maintenance for these unexpected things that happen, such as the beam repair replacement, or the fountain out front that people keep bugging me about? You know, how do we accomplish that? Because otherwise, the one-time monies are going away. So we need to be somewhat prudent about budgeting repair, replacement, capital stock.
Sure, it's really just, you know, we can do that. It's really just a matter of prioritizing. Do we want to put the replacement reserves in property management, or do we put it elsewhere in these other programs? We've been fortunate to be able to fund the programs within the six-year program for the property management. I think what's difficult this time is the IGI, IGI or IGA improvements.
The investment-grade audit, those clean air, it's one of the legislative activities. You know, we were first in line to follow the law and to do the work, and that's been great. Unfortunately, you know, the work came back, millions and millions of dollars to accomplish. And it's kind of like anything, when you spend millions and millions of dollars, and you haven't created something new that people get to come and touch and enjoy and play or visit. I mean, they still can come to city hall and do that, but it's all behind the scenes, and so that's hard. And it does take away from your ability to do other programs and services in the city. So, but when we do, we do plan these things in advance, we do as much deferred maintenance as we can. I mean, not deferred maintenance, we do as much as we can with what we have and keep things as long as we can, but things wear out. You know, this building itself is twenty-three plus years old, and some of the infrastructure in the city is as well, so. And, but those one-time, you know, putting some money aside for that is just like anything else. We can do that and have this little pot over here to play with, but but what are you not doing? So that would be a council decision, so.
So when I take the year-end budget adjustment to the city council in October, you're going to see a request for some maintenance for the city hall.
Got it. So when I'm looking on page three oh-three, and I'm looking at the interfund, the IS charges, reserves, and the M and O, what are they proposed for in twenty-five and twenty-six? I see the numbers, but.
Sure. So for the M and O, these would be anything that is related to the internal service funds. So for property management, they'll be for our insurance assessments, and then also for property management itself. The reserves are primarily going to be for the vehicles and the equipment.
Okay.
But I do want to turn your attention to page three hundred and nine, and this gets back to your question about setting aside reserves. So on page three oh-nine, you'll see that we have an adjusted budget in the capital in one time of two hundred and sixty-five thousand. However, for the year-end estimate, I am proposing to bring a budget adjustment back to increase that to a million fifty thousand. So some of that is going to be for the beam replacement or repair. So we're taking care of what we can with.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. The two sixty-five, where was that?
The two hundred and sixty-five thousand, this is for the fire station, firearms, range equipment, city hall, facility space evaluation, the caretaker. Oh, I'm sorry.
Where am I seeing it on page three oh-nine?
Yeah, so you'll see it under the twenty-three and twenty-four programs. The changes in the capital and such, so we've listed out what the twenty-three and twenty-four programs are, and then what's in the twenty-five and twenty-six programs so that you can see the difference.
Oh, I see, okay.
At the top.
It's all embedded in the numbers then?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on that, guys?
And just the last portion, which city manager covered this, I think, in a bit of detail when he did his introduction earlier this week. But on page three ninety-four, and that's our six-year park CIP, and then we have page four oh-two, which is our property management CIP. So if you want to start with three ninety-four.
Okay.
That's just the breakdown of the new capital projects coming up for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Let's just take a quick peek here.
And then further into the document, we have the six-year CIP, but this shows you what we're bringing forward for twenty-five, twenty-six.
For example, the capital projects listed for the H barn, we're assuming that that's coming from LTAC or grant monies or a combination thereof? Okay.
There's a plan for that, as well as there may be some grants and things coming forward, not just a legislative allocation, which I think would be on your horizon for next year or the year after. There are some public barn grants, and any public funds that come in goes towards the city's contribution.
Okay. Mr. Boki? Oh, you're agreeing with Envy, or just the microphone?
You're in with Envy, yes. So on that, this stuff that is already occurring, so it'll be like specific Chambers Creek and what's going on down there, which I'm not, I don't know, are things delayed or whatnot? That's not in here because it's not new?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't carry it forward. Once it's funded, we just let it go.
Yeah, so the proposed budget is just for new monies.
Okay, so what kinds of things are outstanding?
Are you talking about in parks that has already been funded, but it needs to be done?
If we had an outstanding list on here, what kinds of?
So the major projects that we'll be completing in the next two years that are still going on are Ward's Lake Park, which is going out to bid in the next two weeks, American Lake Park, which is under construction. We have the Oak Brook Improvements, which is small neighborhood improvements, Primley Park, so that equipment's being ordered and waiting for that to occur. We have, let me just get my little cheat notes here for you. Yeah, I got one, too. Let's see what we have coming out here. We have the Tensler Log. We're just waiting for the shelter. It's on a truck somewhere. It's coming. It's on its way, but actually, yeah, it is. So they're finishing that up. The Nisqually Indian Tribe Partnership Project, the Loop Trail Project, we're in design with the tribe. Working on that. The ADA Overflow Parking for Fort Silicon. Under, working on engineering and things that go with that. Park signs, that's, we've got the package that's going to permitting. And the trail is happening, Chambers Creek Phase Two. And Edgewater Park is pending, you know, that's part of next year, so. And then Street Ends next year, and that's what's happening. Pickleball courts. Yes, don't forget those, so. Okay, so that's the parks. That was three ninety-four, and again, that's the summary of the new projects that are on the horizon for the next two years that would require council authority for appropriation. And then if you go to page four oh-two, that's our property management facilities CIP, so to speak, and so you can see the resources that we're putting towards some of these activities that are occurring. And again, we're putting the projects together that meet the ability to have a balanced budget for the city. Many, 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 many more big ideas. However, you know, we have to fit them into the work program, as well as the budget. A city manager will help us figure that out.
So on the four oh-two page, under expenditures, parking facilities, light rail, what does that lead me to understand? I didn't realize we had a light rail system here.
Oh, so this is the sound transit station.
Okay.
We maintain it.
Thought we turned the maintenance obligations over to those guys.
Oh, no, that would be great.
Okay.
We did turn over the security. That was several years ago.
Okay.
There was some security that got switched over, but not.
Maintenance.
But we do the maintenance and operation and the improvement, which I believe this may involve an elevator.
Yeah, the garage.
At the parking garage, yeah.
Might just change that word from light rail to sounder station or something.
Yeah. We've been working on that. It's hidden. You just haven't seen it. It's so lights up in the air.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Um, that's really all of, let's see what we have here. Much of the work, much of this work is paid for with state and federal grants. You know, we're always still looking for resources to help offset our programs in parks and facilities when available. We are looking for grant funding to support that IGA, which is the building improvements under that green law, that green law. But everything we do, again, is to create a vibrant, healthy community for the citizens of Lakewood, and we just work on that every single day. Are there any other questions?
There's supposed to be some green money or climate change improvements for the building stuff. I saw Perkin. There was some email.
There are, are you talking about for the city hall and possibly the police station? The city hall's a tier one, and the police station would be considered a tier two. It's based on size. And so there are several grants out there. Fortunately, we are on the front side, because we did do the IGA for city hall. We're done. We know what all the improvements are needed, and each improvement, as you recall, you got points, so to speak, to get to whatever level you needed to be to meet their criteria for clean and green. And so there are several grants out there right now that we're pursuing, every single one that we're eligible for. Even if we're not eligible, we're still applying, just to see if we can get in there, because we've got our plans, we've got our needs, we've got our cost estimates. And we're working with contractor and engineers that know what we need to do, so, but they're doing, so they would do the work that we needed to do to be eligible for the permitting, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the funding is for tier one, some is for tier two, some are for schools, some are for communities that are underserved, which we meet criteria for that. So again, we're applying for every dollar that we can find to help offset that impact. And then, of course, balancing. Do you pay the fine? Do you do the work? What's the most important? What's failing? Because a lot of these things were, you know, on the verge of. Life cycle, so um, so we're working on that anyway.
Burn us here or whatever, I mean, something's going on, obviously, we're changing it out, done the boiler.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, there's three phases of work, boilers, blowers and um, air movers, so. Keeping it cold, keeping it hot, moving it around. Obviously, we got the cool part done. And the air blowing around now.
Yeah, that's part of our climate change initiative.
It's Wednesday, you know, you're not, I I just got to talk to somebody about looking at the schedule because you're not usually here.
Ms. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is going off of Mayor's the climate type of questions, so um, with fleet, so would. I assume that some will be replaced and are you looking at different opportunities and things like that, so I just wanted to update of. You know, if there was hybrids or different things like that when you're replacing vehicles.
As part of the um, city hall building improvements, there were charging stations put into the basement of city hall, so that'll be helpful, we have. Quite a few charging stations over here by DSHS, so the city, we've got them in on our shared parking lot. Um, we can probably come back and provide more of a detailed, long-term, we are looking at in um, parks and streets. Purchasing um. Electric um, equipment, you know, because that is that there's been legislation in the last two sessions about. Getting away from uh, gas-powered mowers and blowers and hedge trimmers and things like that, so. We do have some equipment replacement funds to complete this year, and so we'll be buying those electron, we have already purchased some for streets. We'll be getting um, some for parks, so we're slowly doing that, so we don't have, we aren't hit all at once if that legislation does occur. Even though they'll give you a window to play with, but we don't want to uh, put ourselves in that position, so. But we'll probably want to come back to you and give you more of a detail on the future for. Equipment, maintenance and police and things, yeah.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't see urban forestry as part of the Parks Department, is that a planning and public works thing? So we'll see that.
Well, you know, it's going to be a big partnership, so I don't think it's been established yet, there's, you know, there's different elements to that, we have. Enforcement, which is typically a permitting, that would be community planning and public works. We have building infrastructure that utilizes trees that would also be planning and public works. We have, when somebody hits a tree or it dies, and there's a lot of trees in the city that have sort of hit their life cycle, that would be um. Probably more on the Parks and Streets side, so as they're putting that program, they're doing the big inventory right now. Uh, they'll be putting together that inventory and then the action plan will come forward as to where it's going to land. Um, you know, where it lands is really just logistically in the budget. I think all of the different uh, divisions and departments in the city will have a hand in implementing that, and then it's about. What can you accomplish with the resources that we put in there? What's the highest priority? And how do we get to where we want to be? So I think that's going to be probably coming forward sometime in the near future as um. As they finish that inventory and they're working on that now, so. But it's not in here right now, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you proposing any fee increases?
I think that's going to be, yes, we are, not substantial, but we are uh, working with finance right now, and I believe um. TOS bringing that forward in um, November, first of November. Um, just as a summary, we'll be looking at a few increases, mostly for um, some shelter increases based on use of picnic shelter. And um, we just, you know, did the ball fields, and so we've looked at those um. We did six or nine comparables and we're in the right place for that, but we'll be bringing some pavilion charges forward as well for um. Before. Operational hours, because it's an eight-hour period and then afterwards, and we've had some situations where folks come in and then we can't get them out of the building, so there's some late charges. That we'll be bringing forward as well. But nothing super substantial.
Thank you. Great. That is.
That's it.
Wow.
Unless you have any specific questions, um, the public art program, you know, we've had, it's, I I didn't really talk about it, it's part of the recreation. We manage the public art, it's on page three eighty-one, um, but it's really the same amount that you've put in the last few years to continue with um. Public art in a variety of different ways, and that would also include purchasing art next year, which I think council directed us to take a look at and. But it wouldn't, we're not adding more money to the budget to do that, would be part of the budget, the budget that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good, well, much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next we have our. Police Department. Budget presentation from Chief Smith. Yeah, really. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for having us here this evening uh, to address the budget for the police department. We're going to start off on page three forty-three. Where you'll see the makeup of the police department and the organizational chart. In that organizational chart, we have basic command structure of the department with the administrative support, crime analysis. Um, chief operations as well as professional standards. Criminal investigation support services as well as patrol and specialty units. It's today, I'm not going to focus more on the numbers, but more on the operations and where I see that we can operate a little bit more efficiently. There are several, the reason I say that is there are several things within the police department that are. A hard cost for the police department that we have no, no control over, such as the uh, cost of our services. For South Sound nine-one-one, which is one point four million dollars in addition to our radio contract with. The Tacoma Police Department where we pay a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars each year for radio services. Many of the items in the police department are. Primarily driven by services and services contracts and things of that nature, which we have very limited control. My my goal is to make sure that we're providing the appropriate services for the police department, for the city. Uh, through the police department and also making sure that we're matching the goals of the city council as well as what we intend to do. As we move forward, this past year and into this year, we've been able to significantly reduce crime in the city. In key areas uh, for the citizens of Lakewood, and and this is something that we would certainly like to continue as we move forward. There are certain areas that will help us significantly in accomplishing this task. Um. As we uh, inti- continue to move through the priorities of the police department. Uh, the main thing for us as far as the goal is, can, goals are concerned, as well as the council goals, number one, to maintain. Adequate staffing for the police department, we've been able to increase our recruitment levels to the point of full capacity. Right now, we're working on retention officers as multiple agencies around us are offering twenty to fifty thousand dollar. Uh, signing bonuses to come join their their department, and so. Uh, maintaining the adequate staffing, and I'll I'll tie that into uh, some of the costs that we incur. Over the years and looking at past budgets, we have consistently paid a lot of money in certain areas and. And number one has been in uniforms, equipment costs, ammunition, training and things of that nature. My goal is to uh, focus more on hiring lateral officers to make sure that we are reducing our costs, reducing the cost of training. Reducing the cost that we're sending to the um, state for the for the academy and also. That we're operating efficiently in a number of of areas. Um, the other part is that. That's important to us is to to make sure that we're, we remain on the cutting edge. This past year, thankful to you, Mayor and and Deputy Mayor and Council, you approved us to to uh, add the flock safety system. Which is added into our our budget now. Um, and it has helped us to to significantly uh, reduce victimization, reduce crime. We're showing a sixty-seven percent reduction in our uh, stolen vehicles within the city. And that we're hoping that we're able to continue that through appropriate grants, we're adding another sixteen to what you approved for us. And we're hoping to reduce crime even further within the city. We want to also uh, make sure that we remain on the cutting edge of technology. To introduce additional technology to the department so that our officers are are able to provide the level of. Of safety, security and comfort that our residents should be uh, appropriately looking for within uh, the city. From its police department. But there are a couple of areas that that I turn to you and ask for guidance, because there are cost-saving measures that will. Uh, drastically reduce costs within the police department, and the first one that I'll I'll introduce to you is. Is a leasing program for non-emergency police vehicles and pool cars. Right now, we're paying uh, a significant amount of money for for vehicles and uh, I've been able to. Work through a uh, program to lease vehicles for non-emergency and pool cars that will save. The city and in which they estimate approximately six hundred thousand dollars over a ten-year period. Um, moving to a model like that will reduce costs for maintenance, reduce costs for gasoline. And also sell our vehicles when they're at peak value. Right now, we have certain vehicles that are close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so when we sell those vehicles, the city gets nothing. And we we uh, will be bringing that forward as a cost-saving measure for the future. Secondarily, some years ago, the um. Uh, city was involved in an incident with a regional SWAT team. It is going to be my recommendation that we. Definitely go back to a regional SWAT team. I I recognize there was an event from years ago, however, I don't think that we've thoroughly looked at. The overall cost of what we're we're doing and how we're operating. Uh, right now, in order to have a SRT within the, within the city, which is a sole. Um, entity for just the city for emergency services. The city is now having fifteen officers dedicated to this, which represents about fifteen percent of the workforce. Uh, for major emergencies that we pull in, whereas if we went to a regional, we would be talking about five people. But here's where the breakdown comes in, the breakdown comes in with overtime. Because we're paying overtime for fifteen individuals in addition to the cost of equipment. Being, we just bought a new robot, that's forty-six thousand dollars. That one city is paying for that versus being spread among several cities. We're also paying a lot for additional training, uh, additional ammunition and additional costs in order to support. That, and I think that you'll see that uh, our SRT cost right now, it on the surface appears to be ninety-one. Thousand three hundred dollars, however, that does not include the additional uniforms, night vision goggles, tactical equipment. Uh, and other, other specialized vehicle equipment that we currently in incur. And so there are several things and several ways that we can make sure that we're operating. In the most efficient manner for our city, we're cutting costs where we can, we can. Uh, and we're making every effort to reduce our budget, I can go over and explain any. Line item in here, uh, many of them are uh, fixed cost, uh, as it relates to. The department or contractual cost as it relates to our. A- as it relates to our contracts with the union. Um, but I I, from that point, I I turn to you and ask. Uh, definitely for for guidance in the council's field on those two items as it relates to leasing program and as well as. Going to back to a regional SWAT team versus having fifteen dedicated individuals for a SRT.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Uh, just out of curiosity, the robot, would that be shared with the SWAT team?
Um. If we went to a regional SWAT team, yes, it would be. Uh, but they also have additional equipment there that would be shared amongst the uh, everyone else.
So how would the maintenance of that be retained? Who would be responsible?
Uh, that would, uh, considering that is our property, it we would, we would maintain. But the better part of it is, is is from that, they get, they receive additional training through the regional SWAT SWAT team. They also deploy as a part of the regional SWAT team. There are certain e- equipment that they already have that we do not have to buy. We have several items on the list such as night vision goggles, additional uh, helmet equipment. Uh, things that we're consistently buying for fifteen people versus five.
Thank you.
So the hundred and fourteen FTEs budgeted, how many do we have in place right now? Are we fully staffed?
Yes, we are.
Great, okay. Mr. Bokey, you had a question?
Yeah, my question had to do with. Through page three forty-seven and three forty-eight, which is the staffing. And just an explanation on the two sergeant positions, it says maintain as authorized one FTE. However unfunded. Anticipating mid-year twenty-twenty-five retirement with no backfill after promotion. And then there's another one on the same, so there's, there's two sergeant positions. Explain that to me, what what does, what does that mean, that unfunded anticipating mid-year retirement with no backfill after promotion? So you're. Going to fill the sergeant position, but then you're not going to fill the patrol posi- what 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 does that mean?
So what that means is that right now we have um, we have sergeant positions that are, that are in place. One being assigned to a specialized uh, assignment. They plan to retire next year. Um, that specialized, in that specialized assignment, they pay for the sergeant salary and other things. Uh, we do not plan to place anyone else over there uh, next year, so we will not be losing anything as it relates to. Uh, that one particular sergeant on on that side, and um. The the second one, we would simply, as a cost-saving measure, we would not fill that position, we would just. Uh, move the appropriate sergeants around to make sure that all areas were met.
So when I, when I look at this, the number of sergeants. Remains the same at fourteen. We're just not going to fund them after these individuals retire.
Yes.
Okay, and so that's where those savings.
Yes.
Come from, okay, thank you, I just just had some questions about that. Um, the jail costs, I know, it just depends upon. We're still within the Squalies, we're still with the county for some limited amount. Are you, are you feeling pretty, I I, I know the number of arrestees is not something we really control, so. Do we have a contract in place, a new contract with the Squalies in place that covers the biennial?
Uh, we are are currently under a contract with Nisqually, and so we plan to continue, continue that with them. Uh, they are a definite lower cost than if we were to contract with the Sheriff's Department, and so. Um. We, we unfortunately, we like, as you mentioned, we can't control the number of arrestees that we have, uh, we really wish we could. But unfortunately, that's, that's not working very well for us.
So my comments about SWAT, and I. Don't know that we're going to get into today, I mean, there are a lot of. I have a number of questions, I mean. Without rehashing too much history, what we found out as Metro SWAT was Lakewood SWAT. I mean, we. Had command, we had most of the guys in the field, some of the participants in the SWAT didn't even have individuals in the field. And we were the deep pockets, and and so it was our SWAT. It it really was without our control, and. So there's that problem and that I think we, we, you know, I need to hear that it's. That it's somehow not just completely our people in harms way. Um, at all times for other cities. Um, the other problem with the particular incident that occurred is. A police chief made a call, they went out in the field, a crime had not occurred. So it was, again, it was like, why were we even there? So there's protocols that that at that point in time didn't work, and um. We were in another city and we had all the liability, so. I mean, there's a lot of issues that need. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues that need to get. Clear cleared up prior to us in my mind agreeing and not. Read, you know, not repeating history. I I my preference would be just, if it's too expensive for us to do this, we just contract out with the sheriff.
And that will be even more.
Would it?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell, any questions?
I was just wondering, I guess, about, so I know in South King, there's a number of cities and they all use Valley SWAT. And I think that that's a really good multi-jurisdictional uh group. So I was wondering, what is the group here? But uh, Councilmember Boke spoke to, it sounds like Lakewood has leaned on heavily for Metro SWAT is what we use.
No.
Was.
Was.
So is there something like um Valley SWAT that is established in this area? That we could, that would be utilized, is that what you're looking for?
So so right now, there are multiple cities in Pierce County that have a regional. Uh, and the person in charge is out of um Piala right now. And so the only thing that we will be doing is blending with that particular group. In order to form a even larger um uh regional SWAT team. However, it would relieve us of ten individuals being uh assigned uh to a SWAT team. Whereas right now, we are very heavily deployed. And when things happen, we're pulling people from various shifts. And it definitely affects our overall deployment on a daily basis as it relates to our patrol. And meeting the meeting the needs there. In addition to just regular training, we're constantly pulling these individuals who have to meet uh the needs we're training. And so by doing so, uh, we eliminate a number of individuals who will be involved. It it eliminates our uh need for additional overtime, our calls, our uh equipment cost. A number of things will uh go down just by uh being a part of that team. The better part for that is that for um approximately three and a half years. I was over uh the LAPD SWAT team and responded to every emergency in the city for approximately three years. So there's not someone here that's going to pull the wool over my eyes in terms of deployment. Personnel, equipment, the needs and things of that nature to make sure that things are happening for the city of of Lakewood.
You indicated, Chief, that the anticipated savings on the vehicle leasing. Would be about sixty grand a year, six hundred over ten years. I don't think there's any objection to pursuing those kinds of options. I don't see or think about it.
Just like to see more data.
Yeah. You you know, vehicle leasing or equipment leasing these days is is a very efficient way to to go about doing things. Especially when you have replenishment, replacement costs, it's easier, I would assume.
Yes, so so the the program and which I I would definitely bring forward to show the actual hard cost. The numbers and things of that nature. Uh, it basically comes down to a flat cost to the city each year for those vehicles. The equity equity that's built in those vehicles at the time of uh trade comes back to the city. Um, and also it eliminates our ongoing. Uh, decreases our gas costs, decreases our maintenance costs. And it also optimizes the time of trade for those vehicles because they're keeping track of each vehicle. And when it comes up to the most optimal time to sell that vehicle, they uh simply eliminate it. And one of the the caveats for us is that for our investigative units, when they're conducting investigations. And they have a vehicle that is um, you know, what we call burned. Whereas everybody knows, hey, this is a police car and they're working out of it. It allows us to just to go back and exchange that car. And within uh oh, that day, they give us another car. Within a week, we have our regularly assigned vehicle, a new vehicle that we're able to go out and 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 use for things of that nature.
And then on the on the SWAT side, I think we'd be willing to kind of take a look at it. As you know, you know, we had a a little bit of. Institutional pain as a result of probably the most expensive uh DV response call we've ever had.
Yes.
Um. So we could probably take a look at it. I, you know, one wonders if we can look at the MOU of other jurisdictions like that. To see how they allocated their responsibility, insurance stuff, and it were all WCI to an extent. But there was a challenge with this particular one, as you knew, because there was a claim.
Yes.
Wouldn't have been covered by insurance coverage and we ended up funding that. So there may be a mechanism to work around that, either with, I don't know, some other. Bond or insurance or some sort of product that no one member city would be stuck for a hundred percent of.
So all of that has changed since then. The inter-local agreement has changed, the way they handle uh the calls has has changed. Uh, the number of people from each city, the the responsibility of each each city has changed.
Okay.
And um, rather than operating off of old information. That we can take a look at the newer information and new inter-local agreement. And if and if it doesn't work, then hey, we we're okay, we continue to work how we are. However, if it does work, then uh we can.
Yeah.
Then institute and look at the cost savings that we we expect from.
Any any sort of ballpark guesstimate on on cost savings over a biennium?
Um, I I would I would look at it in in, I I would say that we would save a good fifty thousand dollars a year. Not more from our additional overtime, our additional cost for equipment and things of that nature. But you figure right now, we we are funding fifteen different officers. For for each time that we we do something. And we hold full and complete liability for every call that we go on or assist them.
And my last question on drug-related activities, investigations, I kind of think. Just because it's near and dear to my heart right now, uh forfeiture money, civil forfeitures, how much money do we generate annually on that, if anything? Sound fun, yeah, but it's within the police department.
You can find that on page, starting on page three eighty-two. And so we have the narcotic seizure, felony seizure, and federal seizure.
Got it.
Yeah, and typically you don't budget for what you anticipate.
Right, yeah, it's not like you're going to go out and.
Yeah.
Scoop up a bunch of, uh, you know, cash and vehicles, but.
Yeah, and then there are restrictions on how those funds can be used.
And also it goes through several several areas of law enforcement and there's a division. So most of the time, what we receive is usually very minimal.
Very minimal, yeah, it looks like it wasn't much in twenty-four, right?
Yes, yes.
Quite a bit, okay.
And that's because many of the laws have changed as it relates.
More aggressive laws, yeah.
What is legal, what's not legal, narcotics, what is possession, the definition of things have changed over.
Absolutely, okay. Yeah, yeah, well, it's interesting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That is absolutely true.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you know, modern technology. All good, well, thank you, Chief. Any other questions for Chief Smith? Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Last but certainly not least. Legal Department overview with our own city attorney Heidi Walker. And we're starting on which page?
Um, I'm not going to be reading the pages to you. I know that's a disappointment. But the one page I might reference is page number three hundred and sixteen.
Three sixteen.
That is the page that talks about service and program changes.
Okay.
Um, and truly, there's a level on which not a lot has changed in our department. I want to open with just an answer to a couple of questions that you were just asking the chief. The Nisqually jail contract terminates in twenty twenty-seven. And that means we're going to start wanting to negotiate that sometime during the twenty twenty-six year. And I would echo what the chief said about um forfeitures. We handle those administrative hearings. And they did slow down for a while for exactly the reason that the chief said, the law just wasn't doing it for us. But even with that, um, they're starting to pick up a little more, but what we get a lot of times is a car here, a little bit of jewelry there, maybe some cash. Um, it's not what you would call a robust program. But there's also some wise advice suggesting that if you get too robust, you become a target with this particular law. It's not a super favorite among some of the legislators. So we, you know, we do what we can with it and we'll certainly watch the trends. Um, with regard to um this department, it's it's roughly called the legal department. It's actually a little bit more than a legal department. It's the city clerk, it's the human resources, it's prosecution and civil legal services. We are a contract city. We contract for utilities, we contract for services. All of those contracts are arrived at through negotiations and uh contract drafting, we do that. We prosecute, we ma- maintain disclose and dispose of public records, we hire, retain and exit employees. Every employee that comes through our department one way or another, we manage benefit programs. So all of those things were like a net that sort of goes over the whole city. Um, and we like to be sort of an invisible net. It's just not super exciting in a lot of ways, but it does take um some eye towards efficiencies. And the two things I want to address that are maybe worthy of comment compared to anything else, you can read what's in the materials. We received some of the ARPA funding that came through the city. And that as the city manager and your deputy city manager and finance director recommended. We treated ARPA money as one-time money. And if you're wondering why some cities are having such a tough time right now, we're having a little bit of an a stretch. But the cities that didn't treat ARPA money like one-time money are having much bigger issues. We were told from the beginning, here are your two positions. You can have a records person and you can have a prosecutor because we're concerned about the impact of body worn cameras, which was another investment of the ARPA money. What we have found is that the extra prosecutor, well, nice to have, um, is not actually something that we desperately need. And we are fine without that position, so we are not going forward with it. It's not a filled position and it wasn't a position slated for ongoing funding, so it's kind of a break even, right? The other position, the position that does the records, the if somebody asks for a body worn camera video or other kinds of records. That position actually has ended up being kind of valuable. And so we have um worked with the rest of the city. Um, and obviously with the finance department and the city manager to figure out a way to put that into general fund funding. But that was, again, that's a stretch, that's a decision that gets made to say, okay, that money's gone, but we still need the position. So that is recommended going forward. The other change is that our prior format was to have a prosecutor who did ordinance work. Was the face of the prosecution for the city, sort of operated at a slightly higher level. We are currently of the position that we do not need someone at that level. We need just some people to cover court. And so the budgeting reflects two associate city attorneys. One of those positions is currently filled with an associate city attorney, the other position is being covered through contracts. And we're operating within that footprint, same amount of money. We are about to look at changing that to two associates, but still operating within the same footprint. Um, you may have heard me over the years, I'm always kind of rearranging the shells on this one. But what it what it revolves around is what's the demand we're seeing in the court? What are the caliber of the people that we're seeing come through to be hired? Can they handle a good load? Are they somebody who's completely overtaxed just handling court? What, who are the players that we have and what are the things we have to do? So right now, that's where we're at. Otherwise, it's it's kind of rolling along the way it does. There's a lot of work being done. It's being done efficiently and effectively, but we're not looking for a lot of changes.
Uh, just a quick question on the position inventory on page three seventeen. There's a office assistant domestic violence. And it's a limited time position, end date twelve thirty-one twenty-four, it go, it's halftime position, it goes away. And down below. There's an office assistant domestic violence grant. And it continues all the way through.
So that's.
So are we losing half a position or are we?
So here's the deal, and I have um done my utmost to try and change the numbers. But what we get from the stop grant funding equals about a halftime office assistant. So back in the day, what we did was we had one full-time office assistant who was half grant funded and half regular funding. We went to, and I think this was during a previous budget cycle, just doing the halftime grant funded. And we do not need the extra half FTE, so we are we are fine with the half FTE grant funded.
Okay, so you can get it, so it was half and half, it was essentially a full-time job?
Correct.
You're making it a halftime job?
Correct, and it has been at that level for a while. Before it came off the books, we were doing that. So we are occasionally, we get sort of an ebb and flow of who's interested in a halftime job. But it's actually not that different than the ebb and flow of full-time jobs. It's just you put up the posting and you see what you get.
What does the individual do?
The individual, when we have arrests, so tonight, there's going to be actually extra arrests. Cause don't tell anyone, but there's a retail emphasis going on. So we'll have lots of arrests tomorrow, but some of them will be domestic violence arrests. And so we have a regular full-time OA who will help get those cases into court. I will be up early tomorrow because there will be all these extra cases coming in, we'll review them all. And then we tell our support staff, hey, yes, this one's good to file, or no, that one's not good to file. With the domestic violence cases, whether we charge or not, there will be an effort made to contact the alleged victim. That very next morning, and we try to connect them with the available services, Crystal Judson or the YWCA. And in some cases, not all, there have been cases where we look at it and we're not going to be able to prove the case. There, it may be that the victim's recanting, or there are other kinds of proof problems, or they're moving out of the state or what have you. We will still try to connect them with Crystal Judson or the YW. Because the interests of those groups are different than our interest. Our interest is prosecution, holding somebody accountable. The interests that we support, but that are best delivered by the YW or the Crystal Judson Center. Are best made through a connection to them, so we see ourselves as that connection for the victim to the services. I can't tell you that it's always super effective, you know, the dynamics are very challenging there, but we do what we can.
So you feel comfortable at a halftime position?
Very much so. In addition to that person doing that bit of triage, let's say they ran into something that really required that extra mile. That's when you start bringing in the prosecutor, personally contacting the victim. Or doing some wraparound from some of the other folks and doing more personal outreach to the service provider and saying, this one I'm actually a little worried about. And I have to tell you, one of the most disconcerting things, and I kind of hear this in what you're saying, is that. It is a little bit of a stabbing in the dark, you know, this person, we're doing all this effort on while this person's the one who's more at risk. You you have to look at what you're getting in the door and hope that you're addressing them as well as you can. Sometimes we never hear from the victim at all, they just disappear on us.
Quick question on page three sixteen, looking at the service program changes. I see a reasonable jump in the WCIA risk assessment, so.
It just continues to increase.
That's huge.
The insurance market itself.
Yeah, it's like double more than, yeah. On page three sixteen, it goes from three seventy-four and oh five or twenty-five to like eight sixty-three and twenty-six.
The very bottom there. And um.
Yes, so what we're doing is the twenty-five and twenty-six, they start off at the same amount. So when you increase the twenty-five, you got to add that to the twenty-six, and then we're anticipating an additional increase in twenty twenty-six.
Based on recent uh issues, transactions?
Yes, and it's been going on for years.
And to be clear, um, it's not just the city of Lakewood's issues. It's, we're in a group. Um, and I would tell you, and I I believe that Ms. Krause, as our delegate to WCIA, would echo this. Um, they're telling us that it's hard to get reinsurance at this point, particularly on police cases. It's just the market, as she says, is not there right now, it's just not favorable.
In my other day job as well, yeah.
Yeah.
And then just being in Washington State and in Pierce County.
It's challenging. Um, the other question I had for you is, you're adding back uh the. The public records legal specialist uh with regard to the body camera work. It was ARPA funded, now it's going to be regularly, regularly funded, general fund funded.
Correct.
So have you seen a significant jump? Again, I know it kind of goes in waves a little bit on the public records request, where do you estimate the city would be? In twenty twenty-four for PR requests in general and then body cam stuff in particular? Where do you estimate the city would be in twenty twenty-four for PR requests in general and then body cam stuff in particular?
Um, what we were anticipating, and we requested two positions based on this. Was that the prosecutors would be seeing these, uh, videos more frequently. And would be able to sort of do a screening of them that we could consolidate into an efficiency. So that it didn't completely, we would review it once as an office and then the, the records person could maybe capitalize on what we had already looked at. The prosecutors aren't seeing them as much, once in a while on a case here and there. Without getting that efficiency, we felt that it's better to go with the records person. Cause that, they're looking at it first. I'm laughing because she's nodding so vigorously. Yeah, um, but the prosecutors haven't gotten inundated yet. Now, I could be back here next budget cycle and say, oh, guess what? We're doing this on every case now, but for right now, that's not happening. And so the real need.
Requesting for those incident reports.
Um, we do get, um, some frequency of requests for those. I don't know that I would say there's an uptick in overall requests. It is more of an ebb and flow, yes. But if it's a video request, it is time intensive.
Very, yeah.
And, and in order to capitalize on that ebb and flow, I would credit the city clerk with making sure that. If it's very busy, both of the records people are going full bore on, on records. If it's not as busy with records, you may have seen that very person here sort of providing some backfill for the clerk position. So we're making sure that in any instance, somebody is going to be busy all day, every day.
And the police department has their own record specialists that pull this stuff and send over here for review, or how does that work?
Department has a designee who is, um, the person that we go to. And the city clerk does training on a regular basis with the people who are the clerk, uh, the records clerks for each department. That is a part of their job. There is no designated individual person for that. So it's a little bit of a, a juggling act. And I would also say that our IT folks are very involved in supporting. Every effort to try and find records and, um.
Yeah.
It's a little needle in a haystack sometimes, but it can turn into all hands on deck. I would also, um, share with you that our team that does this is doing not only public records requests. They also do, um, discovery support when we're under litigation. And I would tell you, um, one of the WCI representatives was very complimentary of our city in particular. To being responsive to records. And that's not just, I do credit the city clerk, cause of course, she's.
Good official.
She knows who's heading it.
Right.
But it really is a reflection of the awareness of the whole city, of the importance of that. The city is very responsive when we do those things.
Fabulous. Any other questions, folks, on this? You guys operate, uh, very well, uh, and very leanly, uh, from what I can see.
Mr. Laura Sella. Uh, just a, a quick question. On page three nineteen, uh, looking at the grants, donations and contributions. For twenty twenty-four, there's a big bump of like half a million dollars that doesn't occur in other times. Is that just the ARPA funds that came in that were spent? Or is that something else?
Which line are you looking?
Uh, the top line, uh, on page three.
Oh, grants, donations and contributions. I do not know what that bump is. I did not notice it when it happened. I can tell you, we did get two people at the same time as we got ARPA money, so that's a good guess. I'm not sure though. The ti- the timing seems like that.
One last question, a little bit. So. Where would the defense contract costs kind of weigh into your department, if at all?
That's, that's a good question to ask because there is this whole holistic piece of it. Um, I'll, I'll be super blunt about this. So the defense costs are being driven by an obligation to a person who's been accused of a crime, right? So that's personal liberty and the whole nine yards is at stake. So you're investing in ensuring that people have a truly fair shake. Before you take away their liberty. There is no such sentiment for prosecution side. So there's no world where you say if they get five defenders, we get five prosecutors, nor would I want five prosecutors supervising five prosecutors would be. Not fun. Um, so what we look at in terms of trying to be efficient with a. What's considered a volume court. Um, and I came from Tacoma, so this isn't true volume, but on its own scale, it's volume. What we look at is when do I need to have a body in court doing a calendar? So I don't assign a prosecutor to those two defendants and then a different prosecutor to those two defendants. If you're all on one calendar, you get one prosecutor. So I really, I try to go for about half in court, half out of court. We have one court that runs five days a week. Two prosecutors should be able to do that without any, even breaking a sweat. And we've done it with one prosecutor, depending on how things are running. I will tell you, um, therapeutic courts are very effective and I'm impressed with how they work. They're also time intensive. That takes somebody out of commission for other duties for the whole time that they're having to be in court working with people.
But the defense contract, if the Supreme Court weighs in and. You, you know, pronounces its rulemaking that thou shall reduce your caseload to one-third from three-thirds. And just increases our costs at some point, right? And we are accommodating that as some sort of projected.
Um, I believe that the manager and the deputy manager are looking at those costs as part of the city's costs. As the person who oversees prosecution, I'm over in a different field.
So it's not, not embedded in our legal department budget?
Correct, correct.
Ms. Krause?
I have the answer. It is the opioid funds.
Ah, got it. And what about insurance or party recovery essential on that page? What's the four hundred grand come from?
So that is, uh, third-party recoveries.
Yeah. For, for example, if we sue somebody and recover something.
Sorry. So if there is an incident, um, you know, let's say, and I'm making this up, if somebody hits a piece of property of the city.
The city monument signage on Bridgeport, for instance?
Yes, for example, and then go after them and eventually we'll get it. But so there's a four hundred thousand dollar budget for the expenditure side and then in anticipation of four hundred thousand dollar recovery. And it may not be, you know, year by year, but yeah. And, um, a- all the information that I'm giving in responses is documented, but I just needed to find it.
No problem. I appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions on that? Very good. Again, thank you for the reports tonight, the overviews. Well, that concludes the department presentations on the regular agenda for tonight's session. Mr. Coffield, do we have anything else for tonight?
Uh, we do not, Mayor.
Very good. So, uh, I don't think there's a need for us to go around the table for council comments. Other than we already shared on Monday. So at that point, where's your?